Welcome to the August 12th meeting of the Board of Education, Forest Park Public Schools District 91. We are delighted to be here with you tonight. We have some people in the room, which is really exciting. And there's now a high caller meeting to order. Um, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Lyon.
Here.
Ms. Vallow.
Here.
Ms. Cross.
Ms. Rummel.
Here.
Ms. Fadn, here.
Ms. Wood.
Here.
Ms. Tyler.
Here.
All right, very good. So we're going to have a student recite the Pledge of Allegiance. This student joining us is, I'm sorry, one second. Abby Huneur. Abby, if I said your name incorrectly, I'm sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job, Abby. Okay, now that I know what this clicker's for. No clue. Um, let's do the mission statement read by Lily Huneur.
Our mission in partnership with home and community is to educate each individual child in a safe and nurturing environment. We will foster respect and self-worth, teach skills relevant to contemporary life, and promote academic success and creative expression. We will encourage an appreciation of the rich cultural diversity of our community, and instill a sense of wonder for the future to enable our students to becoming lifelong learners and responsible citizens of the world. Thank you.
Great job, Lily. Okay, now the vision statement by Liliana Rummel.
Forest Park Public Schools District 91, reading off my own safe and nurturing and diverse and learning community that establishes the highest standards for innovation and continuous improvement to achieve excellence and a goal and a global citizenship for each individual child.
Great job, Liliana. Okay, and finally, mystery last reader for the Equity Imperative, Emmy Whitebone, my little person.
Recognizing that systemic bias has plagued our educational system, we commit to nurturing dialogue around all issues of inequity, including culture, race, faith, socioeconomic status, gender identity, sexual orientation, and different ability as they pertain to classroom practices, school and school district structures, and policies and procedures. We support actions removing barriers to opportunities that allow children to reach their full potential.
Great job, Emmy. All right. And now, we need to approve a couple of things. Everybody have all of their closed session items? Um, agenda minutes? Everybody had, okay, I already read. All right, why don't we take a minute just to make sure? Okay, great. Um, may I have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make it.
I'll second.
Very good. Um, and a roll call, please.
Mr. Lyon.
Hi.
Ms. Vallow.
Hi.
Ms. Cross.
Ms. Rummel. Hi.
Ms. Fadn, I.
Ms. Wood.
Hi.
Ms. Tyler.
Hi.
All right, very good. Five correspondence. Do you have any? No. Okay. You do? Oh. That's not. Okay. We'll read it for the next meeting. Number six matters of consideration or consideration from the public. Is there anyone in our audience who's had no submission? Okay. Anybody want to get up and prompt to and say anything to the board? In the public now? And I'm looking at everybody. Oh, wait a minute, just in case anybody changes their mind. Okay. Number seven, superintendent's report. Before we start, Dr. Alvarez, do you want me to click through? Am I the one who knows this, or does somebody? Oh, my gosh. Do you, is there more to click through? I can't remember. Okay, that's okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thanks.
Um, so I'm going to start with some recognition here. First of all, I'm going to acknowledge that Susan did provide us with, uh, to the board, just thanking the board for everything you have done and what she is going to be formally put in our new curriculum. There's a few things that were the correspondence, I just wanted to know about.
Great, thank you.
With the recognition, I also, because we have to go quickly in the interview, there are several people who are part of the survey process, and I want to thank them. So we have Jeanette Barnes, who really was a warm, facilitating all the calendar invites, making sure everyone was able to meet at the same time. And then Brophy, Dennis Adler, Michelle Harper, Lisa Hoss, Roger Lee, for Superback, Jennifer Bronson, and for Hayes, uh, Luca Junior, Amisa, Ricardo, uh, Ida Warner, Alko G., Ashley, Karen, and Margaret Stevens. Instrumental in regards to making sure we got the right people, had the right people in our schools to lead our teachers and bring just pride to Forest Park. Um, I wanted to also acknowledge our Forest Park Middle School, Matt Texel, who made the payment this past month in July. Uh, Dennis Adler, Ashley, uh, facilitating their air, well, prime, Matthew Parker, Michael Stiglitz, Matthew Goodman, Jakes, uh, Bianca, Rama, and Thomas Smith. And then we have our C D file tiers. I'm going to acknowledge their parents here. So, um, Ms. Huneur, thank you so much. Ms. Tyler, thank you so much. And Mr. Steven Rummel. Um, can't do this, I'm going to be asking other parents for if, um, if they could have their children recite but the vision, the mission, and the ethical imperative. Our preschool conference meeting has started with the package. So we would like to thank everyone who's making this possible. Tanyi Anderson, Jamie Harrison, Andrea Pavly, Melissa Wicks, Jennifer Novak, Lauren Miko, Angel Charo, Brenda Ali, Michelle Romero, Diane Rice, Michelle Harper, and Trish McSaw. And then, um, can't say enough about our building association of summer culture. Um, Bob Dario, Beto Alciga, Michelle Lourdes, Matt Raines, Nico, and Dany, Charles, uh, Appleton, Bob, I don't want to butcher names, but you love it. Vince McCollum, Jeremy Jerome, Michael Kirk, Jeremy Hansen, Jesus Garcia, CJ Dennis, Omar, and Ronde, and Susan Lemon, Bryce, uh, Lejelik, Dwight Pedelec, Alma, uh, Madhul Malupa, Cody, Cochrane, Adana, Candace, and Lique Gonzalez, and Ryder Johnson. Who've all been getting our school ready for our starters to come back.
Hey, Dr. Alvarez.
Yes.
Are you using the mic? Could you use it? I think the math is making it. It's okay.
I apologize for that. Uh. You're going to have to do it with these. I think it's my thing, though. All right, so, um, we have, uh, for freedom of permission, we actually have four. Um, this time around, we have a smart cure commercial purchasing record, so routine, uh, Hoya. We have Blake Dickinson for correspondence to secretary. We had, uh, executing contract between Forest Park School District and BMO. Russo's hardware for schoolwork provided. And then we had Blake Dickinson for legal invoices to comply from our lawyer and any lawyers. So just so you know, there was four total of this one. Now to our nine day action plan. If you don't mind, let me just remind everyone what that looks like. Um, as when I started, uh, July 1st is a nine day action plan. I'm allowed to make 45 days Saturday. Uh, for the nine day action plan, this is, uh, something I presented to you before, uh, regarding all the actions that I will be taking from July 1st, uh, that's going to go all the way to October. I will be making 45 days Saturday. Uh, last core meeting, I mentioned some of the items that have taken place. Some of those are going to be ongoing. I'm requesting that maybe we can just click on that nine day action plan briefing. So if anyone is out there watching, they can just see, uh, what, what I'm referring to. Uh.
Yeah.
Okay. So it's just, uh, very brief, uh, showing my priorities along with actions that are, uh, being done for nine days as we get set. Okay. We can do it from there. I don't know if that should go on the slide. Okay. So with that, some items just to mention out here is when the communication to the board and staff community has been going out through these letters. Um, collecting data and analytics into the current reality of the district. This is a current exit interviews as well, and new current employees coming in. Um, I have also provided, part of the data here is I provided my leadership development plan to the board, uh, last week. Uh, meeting with community partners that's been ongoing as well, as we did at last time. Both new partnerships with Concordia University, and we get new teachers. We want to start our pipeline of teachers. Uh, sharing results of any interview to board members and conducting work as well. Develop spoken sequence for the year for cabinet, there was all throughout grade faculty, uh, downing and social emotional work. Uh, continue to work on the five new strategic plans, but it's due October 1st. Begin working with each principal, again, school career plan, that's been ongoing as well. Um. We have, I share certain aspects of that's going to be planned with them, as in they're going to get started with it. Uh, renewed principal, previous evaluations, they're providing all the press official evaluations, where they have a leadership buffer plan as well, and then consulting and feedback that I provide to them. And then preparing obviously for a back to school event, attacking the student thing, the 4 to 7 here at the middle school in the parking lot, and the opening of school on the 24th, as well as welcoming our staff on the 19th. And last, about earlier, but hiring new principals, and sort of re-mentoring. I will talk a little bit further about mentoring when I get to that slide. I'm going to go into our back to school in-person five day a week plan. Um, I want to let everyone know that this plan is our, it's, it's a, it's a working document. Things may change based on CDC guidance, IDPA. So I want everyone to know that it is a working document, and I'm following the guidance as well as our neighboring, um, districts around us. And our goal overall is to keep our children safe, our staff safe, and our community safe as we move through this document. This was shared, uh, with the public as well as on our website. If you go to the next slide, this kind of explains how it's an ongoing document, and how I'm following the guidance of IDPA, and as well as P D. Um, so things may change in the plan. This is what we have in our board act. Major changes for school year 2022 is that we now have a vaccine. We did not have that last year. People are now having the option to, uh, get a vaccine. Uh, which is the leading public health prevention and a strategy to end COVID-19. We're also saying now we're going back to masking, as you can see, all of us are afield with masks. We're asking that everyone please wear a mask, a recommendation, uh, from the CDC. Additional emphasis is that we want our children back in school. So in-person learning is going to happen. Uh, regardless of whether all the rest of strategies can be implemented at school, but I feel that here for Star, we're able to do the majority of it. And I will go further with that. Uh, and then providing definition of close contact, I'll explain that a little further. And this introduction to test to stay, because we want to be able to have our children here rather than quarantining our children, uh, saying, oh, we think they're exposed, and then putting them to be quarantined. So this is the, uh, the change that are happening in that's what we do. We'll talk a little bit about vaccinations. That's the next slide. So achieving, uh, what we want here is we want to achieve high level of vaccination. The high level of vaccination among any eligible students, older, older, as well as our staff. And then the best way that we can prevent, uh, the COVID being a, uh, going from a person to person. I want to reiterate here that going from a child to a teacher, the exposure rate is minimal. So it's more from adult to adult, and that's our proportion that our staff gets vaccinated. And you will see when, when that happens, where you'll keep our children, and we don't have the high rates of COVID-19. So again, this is part of vaccination. People who are fully vaccinated against COVID-19 are at low risk of, uh, having symptoms or having severe infection. And again, we do have an offer for 12 and older, and that's what this, uh, slide is really pushing for, and making sure that we are, you know, doing what we're supposed to do and get vaccinated. Uh. Let's go to the next slide. So again, this, this is, this new five of us saying, encouraging all individuals eligible for this vaccine, please get vaccinated. Um, it will hold out for the production in our community for transmission. And we're out, so this is where it's staying at, along with wearing a mask and social distancing. Now it's three feet versus, uh, six feet. And when we say three feet, we're talking from mouth to mouth. Um, so we want to make sure that we're staying there, because, um, sometimes we're thinking about three feet, and we're from shoulder to shoulder. It's from mouth to mouth where aerosol, or spit out, whatever you want to call it, may reach the other person. Next slide. This is our assistant schoolway request for the vaccination from parent for their children or from staff. This is something that, uh, so we will be asking come start of the school year for our children over on the workforce. So that by the time that we get that vaccination, we won't have to go through any screening disorder. It'll be less for them. Um, they could also do, uh, for our family. So the parents, so the mother will be asked to provide proof, which is starting this year. And we're asking that this is due done by September 3rd. Again, vaccination is optional. Mask. This is not optional. We are asking that everyone wear a mask that will be worn. And this is for any individuals two and over, whether you're vaccinated or unvaccinated. Everyone must wear a mask. Uh, and that basically, yes, for indoors. For outdoors, we're providing that for the heart, we're allowing some mask breaks. And I'll explain a little bit further regarding that. Go to the next one.
Hey, Dr. Alvarez.
Yes.
Just for a point of clarification, preschoolers will be wearing masks?
Preschoolers will be wearing masks as well.
That's what I thought, thank you.
Um, physical distancing, I kind of mentioned that regarding the three feet. Uh, and reinforcement of in-school learning, so we want our children back at school. We do not want to have a year that we had last year. Children should not be eight hours on the computer. Um, not good for our teachers, it's not good for our students. Um, with social beings, so we need our, our children back, and they will be back here. Um, so that's why the physical distancing, keeping it for the three feet, um, is what we are asking and, um, providing here at Forest Park. Additional prevention, as I mentioned, we're going to be bringing St. Illinois. It is free. It will be the number for our human artists of eighth grader. Um, I will talk a little bit further about it when we get to it in our agenda. I don't have to talk about this, uh, here. But, uh, unvaccinated staff as well will be tested through shield. Uh, ventilation in care rooms will be provided. So a care room, just to explain to everyone, is if a child shows symptoms, fever, vomiting, uh, any of those, we then send them to the care room, um, and nurse will be there to check temperature, called hold, and make sure the crowd gets tested. And this, the ventilation will be in the labor office and nurse office as well. Insistent hand washing, that is the best for anything, making sure that 20 seconds doing, you know, either it can see, take it to the little star, or whatever it takes to walk on air. Um, talking across these needs, keeping it to the side, keeping masks on, obviously. And always saying, open the field, such that you can feel that you have a symptom. We want to keep regular cleaning happening. I've already spoken to Brown, saying that we need to up it when it comes to cleaning, railings. I'll talk about that in the next slide. Again, mask is used, uh, and the importance of it, no matter whether you're vaccinated or not. Some things you heard, people on here, hand sanitizers may be in various locations. And I am requesting that my principals make sure that our children are hand sanitized before and after locker use, before and after bathroom use. Um, so hand sanitize, uh, making sure that hand sanitizer is at all time. Outdoor seating is going to be provided as well, so we can have some work when someone's outside. Forcing some picnic, some tents, uh, from what it permits, obviously. So that perhaps a teacher just wants to do a lesson out there, because, uh, our children see it. Even a mask for you as well, uh, again, in what it permits. And so that's where the, uh, outside, they are working on that now for children's fun. We're looking at perhaps, uh, four picnic tables, so that maybe two classes want to go out there on separate sides, we could have that happen. Additional preventive, um, I mentioned additional spaces outside the living area. Uh, PE will have associated distancing and provide grasp brakes as well. I say that for PE because it's a larger space in there. Um, I know since I've been now working out here at the roots, it's hard to work out without a mask sometimes. Give yourself a little bit of a break. Um, that's part of it. Um, I'm also mentioning music. I spoke in to my music teacher, saying that I understand that the teacher needs to show sometimes, although it won't be in their house, but that it seems going to happen. It should be everyone else masked and perhaps, um, standing, uh, or having distances with children who need to see, but not everyone at once seen. So that at least the girl will all get time to have a mask as well. Um, obviously, you want to stay in physical contact. I got into that habit as well as hugging and handshaking. We got ourselves out of our hand again, elbows, making sure we're doing that. And just reminding people, so we want our shaking hands, because it is what we do. Hand sanitize our actuaries, combining before you put anything to their hands to the face. Um, full high fives, some limiting all wrapped. And we want to increase outside air to indoor, so, uh, that's going to be increased. That is something that I mentioned to Brown as well. If we could do it within, she said he's able to do that, and changing filters as often as possible. Uh, along with increasing cleaning protocol. Extra curricular activities, we are continuing for it. I want our children to have as much normalcy as they had prior to COVID. Obviously, some mask room when they're not playing. When they are playing soccer or volleyball, they can move up. Uh, making sure that they're playing, the, the shower needs to be limited as possible. But they also will be screened, and they will definitely part the shield, so that if they're done weekly, anyone who is part of a sport or an athlete, that shield will be part of it. Uh, CDC has provided school implement screening, testing, tobacco, 20, uh, with routine testing. Coaches and trainers and other people as well, they need to be, uh, screened and fully vaccinated and come, uh, in close contact with children, so we want to make sure our coaches are there as well. And then the bottom part, just, uh, basically just talks about a definition of the screen. Uh, this is just a definition of practice, courtesy. I'm going to define this differently. So here, it's basically saying that if a child is not feeling well, and another child is vibing, if they are vibing by three feet and they're wearing your mask, there is no reason to quarantine the other child. If that one child will go down to care room. However, if that child has a sibling, uh, at home, we would then quarantine their siblings as well, because they are taking off their mask at home, they're supposed to quarantine one another. So that's how we would go ahead and check for that. But if the other child is still vibing by breathing and keeping masks on, there's no reason to panic, and just making sure that, uh, we were checking on the other child and not quarantining one, so that they don't lose, uh, learning. All right. And this goes on to kind of explaining contact courtesy, this is going to be on the website now. Um, and it, you know, keeping, by masking is going to be so important, it prevents this, and it talks about 15 minutes if there's exposure from it. That's when you get scared regarding, um, if they're contaminated or from this site. All right.
Dr. Alvarez. Will we continue to provide masks, um, in all the buildings and kids?
It will happen.
Okay, great. Kids in staff.
As a matter of fact, I will just discuss, uh, with Bob Dario, saying making sure that they have enough masks. I've gotten those right now, but I can't find all my masks that I have, because I kind of put them aside. So it's just a reminder, when you walk in, someone will be like, oh, I've got my mask. We're not going to turn anyone away for this mask.
Okay, thank you.
As well. Um, this again talks about protocols and protocols. Uh, making sure that we're keeping three feet, masking. Honestly, it sounds to include vaccine individuals and individuals previously diagnosed COVID-19 within the last six months. Uh, we check on them, but they don't need to be quarantined. Vaccination. The next slide. We must wear masks on transportation. Uh, this, uh, that's all basically what this is saying. Wear a mask on transportation. What I do want to mention though, is we're going to work with BMO, making sure there's air ventilation at least. Uh, and then intro round, your list your plus rounds are going to be happening again. So from bright light to dark fields, you'll see that's rash, irons in the week. The C's in the mask on, ventilation happening within the, uh, our windows. The next slide just talks about the guidance, everything I just mentioned. It's just a nice little teaching sheet. It talks about mask requirements. All we're saying is wear your mask. Vaccination, best thing to do is be vax, uh, we have vaccination. Parents of 12 and over will be asked to provide vaccination status start of the school. And parents of unvaccinated, assuming that's the last one, participate in the regular steel testing. And again, strongly encouraged to get the vaccination. Uh, at a back school event, we will have, uh, an option there to get vaccination. Social distancing with the group teams. Anytime with inability, try to dress and keep a mask on. And abstaining, any physical contact. Uh, prevention, we can remove the screening, uh, or doing regular hand washing, hand sanitizer work. And stay open for not new blood. Uh, with a building quality, that's ventilation is occurring and disturbing, uh, Forest Park Middle School classroom. So we're not having all of, for our middle school, we are going to have our children class. They are going to, uh, be departmentalized, and I'm along with to switch. But I'm asking that teachers hold on to their kids as children switch, so we will not have a fall in the hallway class. Uh, and keep it to zero level in the hallway, so that we're not speaking, uh, and keeping masks on. And of course, we're going to monitor, uh, vaccination rates at all time. Uh, we are at, oh, then I want to get the right number. I should know this by heart. And 134 vaccinated now from our staff. Uh, we have many that are still on vacation. And when we get that up to 100%, once everyone, um, replies to the survey, if we get the rest saying they are vaccinated, we would be at 19% vaccination rate. So we are just waiting for the rest of our staff to be flashed back, once they get back from vacation. And then, uh, we're going to be looking at community transmission rates, checking our newspaper, as, um, with CDC is the guidance set, and any reported cases in school, and keeping updated with that. And last, not please, our first day of school is August 14th. And we're just excited to have our children back. Uh, they're just going to smile to all of us, even though they may not take. And we're just excited to have our children back, which is going to smile to all of us, even though they may not care for us. With our masks on, we're going to go see what we're ours. So that is our back to school. And I believe that that and my question. Absolutely.
Lauren, can you speak up a little bit?
Yeah.
Thanks.
How much seating is provided? So as we were looking at it, we're looking at six aisles, so that our children are not sitting face to face in that way. So I have not seen the picnic tables yet. We're looking at, hopefully, 12, 15 to a class. So if we do it that way, we could probably sit four to five, putting them on the chair if you have anything.
Dr. Alvarez?
Yes.
I have a question regarding if a student has symptoms and they get sent home and need to test. Is a rapid test sufficient to come back, or do you have to do the one where you go and you get the results within three to five days?
This is the rapid test that shows whether they have it yet, they can come back.
So the rapid test is okay to take it home?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
On to the side note, those tests that are coming, not one to two days now, that's also a lot better. The PCR, is that what you guys?
Is that what I mean? Or the rapid? I'm sorry, I'm saying it wrong, excuse me.
Yeah, I know. Not the rapid one, it's the one that they extend.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Yeah, I'm just set up. Is there an opportunity for them to take a test at school through shield if they're in a care room?
So we're going to talk about shield when we get to it on our agenda.
Got it.
So I can go more to that.
Okay, sounds good. What about teachers in their classrooms without any students? Will they need to remain masked, or can they take their mask off when they're in their room, like for their own planning period?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I want teachers to feel comfortable enough to remove their mask. You know, as much as time to just pick up a mask, like if there's no one there.
Okay.
Absolutely.
What about, I'm putting my parent, community parent hat on, what about, let's say, before or after school, when there are not students in the building, teachers are congregating?
They have to wear masks.
Got it, thank you.
The way that we now, we're all about to wear our masks.
Yep.
So it's going to be required that they wear the mask.
Thank you. I know that you said this, when they're in PE, spaces bigger will be more spread out, that students will be able to remove their masks. If you have a student who does not want to, I'm assuming that's okay?
Not to wear their mask?
No, they want to keep it.
Yeah, obviously, that's going to be optional, if your mask on.
Okay.
But children that are in the classroom, it's not optional to remove it.
I understand, I was saying the opposite.
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I want them to be as comfortable as possible.
Sure. Other question? And are we continuing to do, I could keep asking, but for entry? So when we went back in February?
I know.
Okay.
Yeah, so we are not being screened like we did before. We are not going to be doing temperature checks like we did before, we are right now not to face for it. Once that happens, we may change that. I would love to be in Illinois, we have a higher rate of vaccination. So we're able to go ahead and decide not to have that. And the only temperature checks will be in the care room.
Got it. And will all students be, are we back to 8:15 or 8:20? 8:00 back to, and then everybody's out at the same time? We're not doing a staggered grade?
Yeah.
Okay.
When we ask the, when we're asking the parents of children twelve and over, if they were vaccinated, if they can turn in, whether it's a doctor note or the COVID passports that they're getting out of the chat type or?
Yeah, it's actually just a picture of the card, and that's all we're asking.
And on off. Thanks, Dr. Alvarez.
No problem.
Okay, committee report, so we don't have anything for teaching negotiations yet, that's a couple of months away. Board policy, do you all have anything to share?
For, oh, yeah. For board policy, we did meet. And we made some minor changes, we have provided that to the board, we did not receive any comment or questions about it. As we'll find the need to combine to be suggested and.
Okay, sounds good. The finance, Mr. Brooks? Ooh, okay, that's coming up, okay, got it. All right. Engagement, is there anything to share regarding engagement?
Not quite yet, but I mean, it's just started and we're going to get ourselves together as soon as we all settle into the start of the year. So yeah, we'll have an update on a meeting date, probably next week.
Sounds good, thank you. And superintendent of values, Ms. Wood?
Mr. Lyons and I have a meeting scheduled for next Thursday, August 18th.
Thank you. Okay, oh, I got this. Oh, thank you. Okay, number nine, items for discussion, A, Mr. Eber. Let's talk about FPMF mathematics instructional materials review, please.
Thank you.
Great.
For, on July 31st and 22nd, the FPMF math assessment evaluation team did meet. Really appreciate them being recognized earlier by Dr. Alvarez. We did engage in a very rigorous process. Over the course of both of those days, we were able to complete all three phases of the review for the Kimmel Hunt Mastering Path Addict Series. And then we completed phase one of the process for envision common course visits. It was determined that we would need to schedule a third day. And we did schedule a third day that is needed to be, that they needed to be rescheduled based on the availability of the meeting numbers. So we are rescheduling that date, and then I'll provide an update to the board in September. But again, it is expected that one of those two resources will be piloted in the spring of 2022.
Okay. Great. Does anyone have any questions before we move to the next item?
I have one question.
Sure.
So that's, the material that you all, is it just updated materials for the current curriculum we're using, or the?
These are two new resources that we'll be piloting. One of them we will pilot in spring and then compare that to what currently using, to then bring a recommendation to the board.
So we're likely going to vote on that summer, next summer, in a year?
So what we can do is bring a recommendation to the board, and then we would provide a 30-day window for public viewing. Before then, we brought that back to the board for a action item.
Yep.
Like the people. That way, it gives us time to engage in any additional professional learning that we may do, as well as some of those materials to start.
Got it, okay. All right.
How does this prepare for kids entering high school as they go into the math? I mean, knowing that we're D91, and that they go to 209 or any other school outside of 91. Are these recommendations following that path to get them there?
Yeah, all of these materials are aligned with the Common Core State Standards, or Illinois State Standards, which are based on the Common Core State Standards. That progression, belonging to one of those strands is preparing students to align before they can leave no external classroom.
Maybe I should say philosophy of learning practices, I guess, maybe it's that the right way.
Yeah, that's a great question. One of the areas of focus for our committee review is to look at the instructional design. And how students are learning the Common Core State Standards are given opportunities to engage in maybe the learning activities relative to those standards. So that is a significant part of what the committee is considering, is that instructional design approach, how students are learning, aligned with what is known as the rigor from the standpoint of Common Core State Standards.
Greeting for equity, thank you.
So the district continues its efforts in aligning our assessment practice with current research on how students learn, what inspires and motivates students to learn, and ways in which students can experience increased success with career equity. The standards-based rating and reporting initiative that began in the school year of 2019, 2020, will restart for this school year of 2021 and 22, with the expectation that all grades and all content areas will use a standards-based grading system for grading and reporting in the fall of 2022. This timeline is going to ensure that our teachers and administrators are able to ask teams for that standards-based system, as well as provide additional communication needs for families.
Good question, just to follow up on this, I remember, I want to make sure I connect with Dr. Alvarez. He presented this last year, or a year ago, start a year ago. And this is where the students are getting a much, there's a much greater detail level of specific behaviors and learning that we're looking for. So as opposed to, you get an A, you get a B, it's, hey, these are the skills you need to have, and this skill you're developing, and this skill you're there. So is that more detailed breakout, right?
That's right, yeah, exactly. Previously, if you looked at like math, you get a particular grade, maybe an accumulation of points or hours or scores, maybe more of a traditional or sort of omnibus reporting on the report card, for example. What we will be looking at in terms of the standards-based system, we have specific standards to share with families and students, how they are progressing in direct correlation with certain standards.
So that's what, to do much more targeted IP, right, where that's helpful. If you have a student who needs a particular assistant, you know exactly what to go for, you need to help them back, you need to help a particular element of them.
It certainly will help to support teachers in terms of catering and targeting particular standards for particular students. To the extent that there would be anything referencing maybe a particular standard of IP, that probably wouldn't be the case to give that right word to IP, but it absolutely will guide whole teaching and learning of the classroom. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Eber, do you think that, I know you've shared this before, but we've been through a lot. Do you bring a sample of a standards-based report card the next time we talk about it, just so that it could be reshared with the community?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, in fact, we do have interest in what the standards-based report card would look like.
Sure.
For grades three through eight in English, science, arts, arts as well as mathematics, it actually already made those decisions and completed that work.
Yep.
Again, in 2020. Also, just to note, our primary centers do use a standards-based report card.
Yeah. So if you could reshare, it doesn't have to be next month, or whenever you want to revisit, I assume we'll talk about this before it becomes really, really official?
Certainly.
So I think maybe next time, if you could reshare for folks that three through eight, because people are different grades, centers, you know, that would be helpful.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
On that, as this goes over, when you start looking at reporting back on these new standards, so that this would be a whole lot more information, is there a need for a different, is there going to be altered reporting mechanism, or like a bad work, something, that you take this to show, hey, yeah, we just show, hey, this is how this is for getting the. Now it's 55, that's good, that's something you guys know as well?
One of the things that we will be working on moving forward, I hope to fully implement a standards-based system, we'd certainly be looking at a correlation between how students are performing on some of our state assessments, compared to how students are, you know, the, how students are progressing relative to the, what is reported on the report. So, you know, looking at like, what are students' grades, so to speak, and comparing that to how are they performing on our state assessments. So that would be one correlation that we are sort of thinking.
Thank you.
I have one more question. This is not related to anything you said, but I'm thinking about, we're starting back to school, teachers will have professional development to begin. What's the focus of that going to be for opening professional development? What will our teachers be experiencing when they start?
So one of the areas that we will be focusing on is second step, and how that's going to support our social emotional learning curriculum.
Great.
That's going to be one area that we'll focus on in this year.
Okay. It could be also not just pre, when our students get back, but it could be later on in the, it could be like first quarter, you know, what's on deck for professional development? That was a better question, sorry.
And then one of the areas we will be focusing on in this district is looking at the Illinois Equality Framework and the score that goes along with that. And assessing areas, areas of need, how we will continue to support our school improvement planning process. And as we begin to solidify, you know, our district improvement plan, as well as that strategic plan, you know, in detail, that will generate specific action steps relative to professional work.
Okay. Got it, thank you. Anybody else? Thanks, Mr. Eber, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sure. Nidhi Uchatharama, welcome, we're so happy to have you.
The first thing on my item is just our back to school event, or like? It's our back to school event that is going to be happening next Tuesday from four to seven, right here at the school in the block. There's going to be a lot of fun activity, so please spread the word, please have families come out. It's definitely going to be an opportunity for us to rebuild that community, right, while still being district outside, wearing our masks whenever possible, I know we're outside, but we're still going to keep our masks. We're going to be having a lot of swag, to give away this year, everyone swag for our registered students and our families, such as shirts, masks, backpacks, in collaboration with some other organizations. We're going to have some backpacks and goodies for our young people. We're going to have a vaccination clinic for people who have not had an opportunity to be vaccinated yet. This is only the first vaccine though, so we'll have to do a follow-up one, which will most likely be correctly for our next board meeting next month. And so that will allow enough time for that next goal to happen. Other things that are going to happen there, music, games, food, library things. So it's really just an opportunity for us to rebuild the community, invite folks in, meet teachers, meet principals. All of the schools will have a table there for you all to kind of interact with our schools. And we're also going to have various community resources there to be able to, you know, get whatever access you might need to other resources in that space, it's going to be good fun. The next piece is my.
Can I have a question?
Yes.
Can students also register?
Yes, so students can register there, by students, their parents.
Yeah.
Can register there, please be known that this is a, still an online registration process. So you will need to have all of your documents, things that will need scanned on your phone, but we will be doing it with the iPad here on the site. So you can take your photo here as well of your documents, but just know that we will not be physically taking anyone's documents. So the process is just more of an assisted process. Dr. Alvarez likes to explain it as the airport check-in process, right? You go in, you're on your little machine, you're doing your thing. And if you need support, our secretaries have kindly been able to participate, and they're going to be there to support that process as. been able to participate, and they're going to be there to support that process as well when people have questions about the portal or any of the questions that might be asked. So please come out if you want to register to tell everyone about that. So yes. But if you have the time and you have internet, we invite you, we start the process on our website just to get the ball rolling. And then if you have any more questions, you can come and do that next event. Any other questions about that?
Oh, everybody's invited, right?
Everybody's invited.
New families who have little ones that are not yet in the district, grandparents who are around, cousins visiting, still on vacation. Everybody can come, hungry, eat, laugh, have fun. We'll all be together. Okay.
Correct. Everybody can come as long as everyone is respectful of our space and our, you know, hospitality. And so we are going to be there in community to make sure, you know, this is about Forest Park School District starting up. All the point of the event is to promote awareness to our start of school day within August 24. We want to have as much attendance as possible on that day, if not a hundred percent, not nine percent attendance on the first day of school. That is the goal. We want everybody back in our buildings.
Thank you.
All right. So then the next point is my introductory one-on-one meetings. So I've been meeting with a lot of you already, a lot of staff, a lot of people from the community. So it's a process that I tend to, like most people like to do in order to get to know someone at the top. As you all know, I moved to this state, and so I'm really listening to what the community has to say, the feedback that people have in regards to our schools, to our community. Probably want to contribute, probably want to engage and interact. I kind of go by where I live with everyone, and then I act as a person who respects the value with, and so then we go from there. So it's been really fun getting to know everyone. I've had a blast on my one home with people that I have had an opportunity to connect with, and that is really helping me build my strategy for community engagement at the school level as I connect with our school administrators as well to figure out what their ideas and their plans are for their building, so that we can work together to re-engage our families. Question about that?
I would just say that I know that you've been approaching this in your own way, which means going up to people and asking them questions on the street in Forest Park. Who are you? This is my role. Do you have children? No, you don't, you know, so for all of the folks listening, she's really serious about getting to know people with no agenda, just really wanting to get an understanding of what's happening. So if she doesn't find you in some sort of way, and you would like to connect with her about our community, you should feel free to email her, just nuchetta hyphen Ramos at fpsd91.org.
Yeah, thank you for that. So please, if you see me out there just talking to you, I will do that. I do have a tendency to do that, to just check in with people. When I see us waiting in a line, getting lunch, or anywhere really, I try to check in and see, you know, who's in the village, who's going to our restaurants, our parks, our library, right, our schools, who's walking their dog. I just want to know who's around because our schools are here to serve everyone. And so that is part of kind of the goal here, the vision. In terms of the district communication strategy, right now it's kind of through hold. My first focus is really getting our website in order. We have a lot, we like the standard, so that we have a lot of things that we can include on the website. And so I am working with a couple of vendors and organizations that I'm listening to kind of their pitches as to how they can support making our website better. The whole goal of our communication is to make sure that we're transparent in what we are sharing and that we are timely and organized in that manner and that it's clear. So we're asking these questions of different organizations that can support with that type of work. There is a lot of things with compliance and accessibility that we need to work on within our website that I've been asking those questions of both to make sure that we are up to speed with what needs to happen within our main, that's where our communication from the district to our website, which is also connected to our schools' website pages. Then we also have our social media app, which we're trying to expand. Right now the one that uses the most is Facebook. We're trying to re-establish our Twitter account. I know some of you all have shared that it is suspended, and thank you for that. And it is unfortunate that that happened, so we're not sure right now if we'll be today, but we'll come, or what will happen there within. Seth and I did look into it, tried to figure out the mystery behind that situation, and now we are, now I'm in contact with Twitter folks to see how it can be free, maybe access to the app, otherwise we might have to start over. So those are the two pieces. We did, one, I guess some fine piece that we were able to do with social media is now we are archiving all of our social media data. So we are able to have access to that both in all of our posts, our history, for all of our social media and snapshots from our website. But right now, this is compliant with a requirement for our access. So we are currently doing that now, and it has actually been compacted as well. It's just ongoing and working. Another piece to the communication strategy is to streamline our communication across the district and school level. So we have started to be more collaborative when it comes to how we are messaging to our families, just to help all of us and not be repetitive, things like that. It's just going to be really helpful all around for us to share similar information to all of our families, especially when people have, might have children in multiple buildings, considering our race, right? So they're supposed to have a really great at sharing things that they want to share out and how they're collaborating together. So they're working together to make sure that our information is consistent across the board and that everybody is getting the information that we need. So that's very exciting to be able to continue to do that a little bit more. On top of that, we're working on our brand identity standards again, if I mean, I always say. We are going to continue to make our brand so that we're being more consistent with like templates and things like that for, for us to share. There will be some things that I share for all of the board as well for YouTube, and your type of communication and things that more might be using. So those are kind of the first things on the docket here. It's a lot, but, you know, we can put it together. My goal is to really lean on a lot of our leaders in our district to support some of this work because I think that this is their school, this is their community. And so I am fully conversant of that, and I'm so happy to be working with all of you, supporting us and making our communication much better moving forward. So that will continue to get parents, families, teachers, students with information that they need to be successful.
Thank you. I have a couple of things. So one of the questions, I'll say this on behalf of the board. If we see something on the website that is not correct or a link that is not working, I'm certain you're aware of that. Do you want us to tell you, do you, what makes the most sense?
So if you want to just email me, like, for the most part, I'm aware.
Yeah.
But just letting me know because as I start picking some of the things that are moving things around, some of the things that get broken. And so I, that's why I'm talking to some of these other vendors to help with that because they will be able to support with whatever changes. They don't have to go past the board and then those sites will say, hey, broken link here, this is not working, this is missed out, or this is something else that's happening. Like this is old information. So it's really to start to clean that up. So it is helpful when I know a lot of teachers and folks have been really collaborative, sharing that information with us. And then whoever, we can send it to whoever from our city or neighborhood, and they'll go over it to me. So whoever is ready, we directly express, but it doesn't really affect the communication.
Okay, great. And then I also, I know it's, if you're coming up with our strategy, one of the things that we talked about that I just want to share is that that also brings greater efficiency financially and that we are working really hard to be thinking about ways in which we were being redundant about communication needs. And so I'm really excited about just working smarter and not necessarily always farming things out when that's not necessary. I wanted to say that we're being more efficient. And then finally, I also wanted to say, I assume that you put together the video that was posted on Facebook, which if everybody hasn't seen it, it's of Dr. Alvarez talking about back to school, which is really great. I got way too excited about it when I saw it. Three minutes after it was posted. And so I just wanted to say that, thank you for doing that. And also, if you haven't seen it, I'm excited that this is just something new that I think our community is going to be really happy to see our new leader out and about and doing all the things.
Yeah, I'm hoping to really take a lot of the video, share a lot more content. Part of the strategy is to highlight the work that's going on in the day-to-day, so visiting all of the buildings, classrooms, or teachers, right? To be able to share the work in real time as it's happening, so that our families know exactly what's going on, happens, is going on with their children. So I think there's a lot of really amazing things that are happening in Forest Park that are being missed or not getting highlighted necessarily. And we are our best promoters. So the more we share our successes and our work, the more the community is going to start to understand that there's a lot of great things happening. And so we're definitely going to be trying to do that. I'm going to also be creating a form for submissions for highlights, so that we share with all staff, where people can send in like, hey, you know, my classroom we're doing this, or these are some photos, this is missing, or something like that. So that is something that is in the works as well. There's all these little tiny projects that are going on that, you know, hopefully I'll have more to report on that than next.
Sure. And I was just going to say that I'm, I will say to the board that as, because remember, we have a commitment to visit buildings every year. And so as we now get ourselves back in buildings to see classrooms, getting the appropriate, you know, approval from folks, we're not surprising them, that if you see something, you see a great photo, you take a little video, we will also want to make sure that we share that with her. We do not want to be sharing that out on behalf of the district. We'll, we'll, we will utilize the same system.
Yes.
So that it's consistent.
Exactly. That would be very helpful.
Yes.
Most of our communications come from our district website for our schools.
Totally.
And then if everybody can share it on those other pieces, I know that in the town they have a lot of different pieces and things that as the public page do not be a part of because we're an entity and not a person. And so if you all see that post on here and read that, one of the various groups from Forest Park would benefit from it, just go ahead and share the post into those spaces rather than copy this.
Got it. Thank you. Anyone else? You did great. Thank you. All right, Mr. Brophy, one FY 2022 tentative annual budget?
So at our office meeting, we present a tentative annual budget. And just a few comments about this FY 2022 tentative annual budget. The budget is very basic in its presentation. As we've done in the past, we budget very conservatively for our revenue. That is, we indicate figures that are less than what we expect them to be. We expect them to actually materialize to be higher. And for our expenditures, it's the opposite. We budget more than what we expect to actually incur. So just a couple of comments about revenue. We are basing our property tax revenue based, based on a 2.3% similar price index figure that was from December of 2020. Our equalized assessed value, some new information for the board. Our equalized assessed value has substantially increased compared to prior year. Prior year is about $354 billion. Prior tax year, that is tax year 2019. For tax year 2020, it was increased to about $430 million. That was a level that was about $20 million short of what it was prior to the housing bubble. So that's going to be something that will be factored in. And then for some state revenue, we're always concerned about the state's economic stability. And so we will continue to be very conservative in our state revenue. Just because we want to make sure that the state can afford to disperse the funds that it's committed to. And then for our property tax revenue collection rate, preliminarily, we're indicating a 90% collection rate. We're going to increase that probably to about 97 or 98%. So when we do that, the budgeted deficit that we show is actually going to go down. So when we go to adopt the budget in September, budgeted deficits are not going to be what they are as you're seeing in this tentative budget. They're going to be, the deficits will be less. And then probably the most challenging allocations for revenue is going to be for interest earnings. So while there was some recovery to our economy, the economy seemed quite a bit of inflation. In terms of interest rates, it's very difficult to predict what that's going to look like come end of March, just when the vice president treasurer gives us our final interest earnings for the year. So conservative figure shown here, $47,000, is what we're budgeting at this time. Are there any questions about the revenue side of our tentative budget?
I have a quick question.
Yes, please.
Do you have a sense of twofold, how much revenue we'll lose by this DVS closing, but how much potential revenue we will gain by the Mr. Beef and Taco Bell?
So at this time, it will be difficult to predict what the revenue is because the valuations that we determine.
Okay.
And that, that will, that would be an indicator of what kind of relevancy. I would say it's likely that it would be offsetting to the positive.
Yeah.
So because CBS is not going to, that property might become, you know, it'll become a different business.
I think it's becoming condos. I think it's being developed.
Right. So there, so there's going to be some substantial increase in the EBIT. We won't see that for probably two or three years.
Okay.
At least a year after the development is complete.
Okay, got it.
So we'll anticipate that. I also want to mention too that in the next two, three years, the village has two tax incrementing financing districts that are going to be expired. So that's something else that will be factored into our law enforcement regulations as well.
Okay.
Any other questions? For our expenditures, just some very typical expenditures, we have to, we have to budget for outplacement tuition for our students who are attending services outside of the district. We have some professional development commitments that we wanted to allocate for. I want to mention too that Dr. Alvarez has connected us with some key resources for our district. One is to help support our substitute pool so that we can have a better substitute pool throughout the school year. Another is to address the mental health resources that are available to staff, students, families. That's one that we're also looking at. And we've also looked at one, another resource for structured play activity during recess time. We know now that we have to have mandated recess at least 30 minutes a day for our, for our students. So we're looking at some of those resources. There'll be more to share about that next month. And then we also have, as we do here, our personnel, our teachers who earn graduate credit to move on our salary schedule, or to land advance, I should say, or factor that in. And then I indicated some outstanding personnel positions. Already, what I shared with you is, is not complete. We have two other positions that have opened up that we closed before. So there's quite a bit that we're going to have to account for the coming weeks. As we're, as we're not sure if those positions will be filled by the time that this budget is adopted. We'll have to have placeholder salaries since we won't have actual personnel hired possibly at that time. We hope we will. And if we do, we'll use the actual, if we have it at time for the election in September. So we'll see how that goes.
Okay.
Just one other comment I want to mention about the process. So at our September board meeting, September 9th, we will have a public hearing at 6:30 PM. That will be for 30 minutes, all public members, all public. Anyone in the audience can ask questions. We do that for 30 minutes prior to the start of our regular meeting on Thursday, September 9th. Any questions about FY 2022 tentative budget? That's all for that.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, number two, FY 2021, fourth quarter financial report, please.
So our fourth quarter financial report, please go to page two and to the bottom. And so this is the fourth quarter financial report that we normally deliver in July. And if you recall, township was not able to provide us with our June end of month reports because they were waiting for county to issue our ADC tax rate report, which didn't come until two weeks into July, which is very late. So what our fourth quarter report indicates, as you can see here, what the township did, they only indicated the revenue that was predicted, that was actually captured from a they only indicated the revenue that was predicted, that was actually captured from the state. So in the, in the month of June, you can see a lot of those lines why, why there aren't, there is revenue indicated. Most of our June revenue comes from final dispersments of property taxes at the end of the year. They did not, because they didn't have that data, they chose not to include it. So what that means is for our FY 2021 audits, they're going to do those adjustments for our audit. And I'll talk more about that in September. In regard to the fourth quarter, very typical, we don't see significant revenue in the fourth quarter. We do see typical expenditures that was indicated here as we usually see. Thank you. This is our year, year revenue dashboard. We did see our budgeted revenue, so that's why we have green indicator for our few months of revenue for the budget. And once again, we, we achieved the green benchmark because we budgeted conservatively for revenue. We captured more than we expect to take in so that on paper, we can see in the worst case scenario, what our financial position would look like. So we expect it to be in green coverage for our revenue dashboard that you see here. And you want to page four, please? For expenditures, this is our expenditures dashboard. Once again, we expect it to be in green because we budgeted conservatively. That means we did not spend out as much as we budgeted on paper. So we, we met our target. And also want to mention, we're going to see this in the budget actual report that comes after this, that last year, because of COVID, was atypical in terms of our expenditures. We did not spend out as much money as we normally do. So we expect to easily hit our green target because our expenditures were not typically our, not having kids in the building, not being able to do certain extra duty, extra for activities. And then our last page for our fourth fiscal quarter report, this is your year-over-year fund balance. So something I want to point out, the blue is FY 20, the green is FY 2021. Our first two, our education fund and operations maintenance, those are fairly close in terms of what they show. The transportation, the reason why that's so high is because we didn't transport students last year, except for those students who were transported out of the district. So we allocated money in the event that we were going to have to have a break of year transportation, but we didn't spend a lot of it because we didn't have our regular transportation business, we didn't have field trips. None of that hurt. And then lastly, our insurance retirement social security, we just improved the position of that fund by, you can see by elements. And then when we get to budget actual, you can see the actual reserve levels for each of those funds for FY 2021 as of June 30th. That's all for the fourth quarter financial report. Unless there are any questions?
Can you remind me, transportation is something that we can move out of?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Exactly right. So we can transfer, we can do inter-fund transfers between education and operations maintenance, education and transportation, operations and transportation. They can go two or more, either those three.
Okay.
And as the board has done in the past, we've done transfers from transportation to operations maintenance just to improve that fund's position.
Right.
Because as we'll talk about in October, November, the summer, we talked about our property tax funding. The operations maintenance fund has a cap that says when you go to levy for that line item, it hits a ceiling that you cannot exceed, there's a limit to it. And so because of that, it limits the amount of revenue that the fund can generate via property tax levy.
Right.
So we tend to have to transfer money into it to support the financial position at that point.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Our last item is the budget actual. And just a couple of things I want to point out. At the very top, you see in the blue type, I wanted to show this just to emphasize the atypical, the atypical fiscal activity for the end of FY 2020 and the entire year of FY 2024. So if you look at our expenditures, you can see in FY 2020, we spent less than the prior year. And if you recall, shutdown happened in mid-March of 2020, right? So there was basically a quarter of school that was closed that year. And that also came with the expenditures that would not occur in the last quarter of that fiscal year. This fiscal year, if you look at what our actual expenditures were in our education fund, $14.8 million, again, much lower than what we typically incur. And I, I mentioned this because it's important to note, this past fiscal year was atypical. It would be incurred much lower expenditures than we typically do. And so I just wanted to emphasize that in our budget actual. And as usual, in our budget actual, for revenue, actual captured was greater than our budget. Expenditures were less than what we budgeted. All funds are in a very healthy financial position going into this fiscal year. Are there any questions about the budget actual for FY 2021?
Okay, we're good. Yeah, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay. I did put anything up there because I, there were a couple, just things I wanted to space to talk about. So one would be for the back-to-school event that Nidhi's talked about. Please, please, please share widely, have all of your friends come, children come, obviously. Please remind people to get their children registered for school. I cannot stress this enough, that we want to make sure that we know what we're planning for before the first day of school on the 24th. So, and if anybody needs some support, you guys will let me know if I'm saying this incorrectly, but they can be in touch with school secretaries, is that right? If they have, okay, thank you. So if people are, you know, still in the process of registering their students, if you're running into any issues, feel free to connect with our terrific schools, secretaries. That would be great. Not our superintendent, but secretary. Um, I'm excited to have breakfast with the teachers on the 19th. I hope my presence will be welcomed. I'm looking forward to welcoming everybody back from summer break. I hope everybody got some great rest in and found a little bit of joy this summer. I would love for all of the board, you've all been invited, for as many of us to join as possible. I think it would be really lovely for our teachers to know how supportive and grateful we are for their expertise. And we're excited to have them back. Jeanette and I have finally gotten on the ball with Jeff Cohn. And we'll be in touch about dates for fall. I think, Jeanette, are we looking for October? I can't remember what we were looking for. September now. So we'll get some dates out. And we're going to see what we can make happen to meet with Jeff. I think we all agreed it was really great to have him setting some board expectations. And we'd love to do some year planning with him. Everyone, I think, should be registered for the Triple I Conference in November, if it still happens. I would love for us to go. I think there's so much professional development to be learned. So that is happening. Oh my gosh, the big one. Okay, so for a month, I have been forgetting to remind our newest members that you all have a mentor. I've, yes, it is good to know, right? So in any case, Shannon is Laren's mentor. Patrick is John's mentor. Monique is Steve's mentor. This is going to serve a couple of purposes. So you all know that within your first year, there are some things that need to be done to satisfy your training. Your mentor will help you stay on task to make sure that those are all done. Meetings are set up, find that you've met with, with Mr. Brophy. You've had your meeting with Dr. A. We've connected. You've done school visits. All of those things have happened. You've done reported training. So this is also a person that if you have a question about something board-related, district-related, you wanted to bounce it off of someone, this is the, the best person to sort of start with. And then we can figure out where to go from there, if necessary. So if you have an idea for an agenda item, you want to bounce it out, someone connected your mentor about that. You have a question about the Triple I Conference, connect with your mentor about that. So I think this is going to be a really great opportunity to make another connection on the board. There are no formal, not asking people to meet once a month or anything like that. I know we all have very busy lives. This is a really robust volunteer commitment, which I'm so grateful you all are doing. So I'll leave it up to you all to decide what's appropriate, but I'm excited about the mentors. Does anybody have questions about anything that I said? Okay, well, all right, I think, I think that's it. All right. Dr. Alvarez, you want to go?
So first one on here is the Forest Park Middle School schedule. I know many of our teachers were kind of what's happening with the middle school schedule. We're keeping the middle school schedule out now so that we can get it from our staff as a goal to the year. The biggest change of what is happening is lunch will be 20 minutes as well as any of our exploratory teachers that have extra time to support within the classroom as our children get back to school, really holding in on any unfinished teaching and learning. So that they can support the teachers that are in there. This is not for any of our exploratory teachers to develop a lesson plan, a unit plan that is sore. It's to go in there and support for the tier two as we're working with children in the classroom. There may be some times where a teacher may ask me to do a one-on-one on the side with them, but really to get more of our teachers who have extra time to support. And then as a goal for the year, looking at our schedule so that it's much more child-centered and working with the new principal at middle school and also with RAP, went through several of it. And then for mentoring, I'm going to stop, any questions?
For the lunch period, what was it? Has it always been?
It was 30 and 40 minutes.
30 minutes?
Yeah. Four.
What are we doing with the time that was taken away?
So that time is going to give it to math and calculus.
Okay.
Express.
Sure. I'll be honest, I'm a tiny bit worried about a 20-minute lunch, but, you know. Okay. All right.
Again, we did revisit it again, but the schedule has not changed yet.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
For our mentoring program, we now have two new principals that will be in a sentence. So for Ms. Bodden, she will have Jamie Soder as her mentor. So along with that, I want to make sure that they get an option to go through having other partners. I will give you talk about their wonderful course here is principal. And so I did provide the National Principal Leadership Academy to them if they wanted to apply to that. It's a year long, where they get to be with other person, principals, kind of talking about, you know, their roles, or pick some other guy that might stop the work based on size. They, it was actual, they don't have to. I will also offer them others at West Cook, does, West Cory does provide others. And as of right now, I'm looking for a mentor for this class. I'm looking outside our district for any of the principals there that might be open to supporting a mentor really. But they will also have my support. I'm not letting them alone. Their success is our success. And so we're doing this together. And I'm just excited to have both of them, you know, working for us. So that's basically the goal of our mentoring program as of right now for our, our new principal.
Sounds good.
Are we working on that? No problem. I, the middle school mentality is so different. School, running a school for middle school is just different than a K. So I am a particular mentor like that.
Anybody else before we move on to Ms. Morris? Very good. Do you want to take this? Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Hi, Ms. Morris. So good to see you. Thanks for joining us. Sure, start whenever you're ready.
I just wanted to move right a little bit to everything that the IAS did this year. I think they're championing not with you. So it's about to begin to show all of our work each team. This is probably the most creative that I've seen everybody yet just because the IAS through a computer or virtually, especially in part before hybrid or the challenge as well. I could share a slideshow. We, I don't know. So I had to shorten my slideshow because of all the great work. That was probably about 35, 40. But I couldn't, oh, I'm sorry. But I couldn't. So I couldn't share all that to take up all your time. So I tried to shorten as much as I can, but I did share it for another chair more later. The entire presentation, so I'm going to just try to do, you know, kind of short version of it. So this is our year that Zoomed by. Obviously, our expectations had to change this year because we were not in person. So every school adapted their IAS expectations from previous, in respect of who you're responsible, who's paid to adapt to the virtual learning. It was more, you know, just having a quiet space to work in, having your cameras on, using chats as a disruptive. And primarily adapted more to the younger grades, using more visuals, intermediate, use more verbal and so forth. So this is just an example of our expectations for the virtual learning here. This is one and final of the school. So typically, each school would come up with a goal based on previous year VR data. That's obviously where the girls. And our goal would be to decrease a certain behavior, the clients, making this a spark, we're seeing a trend in that. So our goal would be to decrease that. Because we ended the year in March, we didn't have a full year of data. And then going into over two year, we didn't track that. So what we did this year is each building came up with certain areas of concern we had. One of the major ones was the staff process before was attendance, students logging on to the show. So teachers and the team was just, you know, coming up with, what are some strategies to help them to do this? A lot of things that went into that, I guess, is a positive behavior system. So it was more variety and incentive. So we do get kids to come out, maybe it's sometimes one-on-one, or maybe I invite a student individually. How can I support that? Maybe if doing a whole thing that we're not even a student level, we do this, we provide support at home so that they can come out as a way to continue to do their learning. So this is one and final, each school had their own. So I just wanted to share kind of what it looks like. School spirit was a big push this year, obviously because we work together. But we had, every school did either school spirit at week or, you know, Friday, we had company Fridays, just to encourage, you know, that school community. We had just either spirit on the Fridays or some, we had neon days, jam days, just different techniques to make it fun. This is just the gist of our first quarter celebration. Again, typically we'll be in school and have some ladies and have some type of events. So again, getting creative, we have high arraigned more dance parties via Zoom, costumes party for via Zoom again. Or we also had students come out to play around and do a walking rotation of tables. So we could do a meet and greet, a follow-up guideline, and then see each other, decorate and pipe race. This is our second and third quarter celebrations. Because we wanted to do something in form movement, a lot of schools chose to do Zoom parties and, and come on with an actual student instructor, instructor. And it's great to see that a lot of people actually were participating, weren't just getting in watching. They were actually getting on their living and then asking how they are going to teach her to participate and do her lesson. So that's just a good example of that. On the bottom video, we had Matt Wilheim, who's in my X Riders. He did interactive performance, we had met at primary schools, just doing interactive, he's a yo-yo guy, doing tricks with them. So it was a lot of trying to get him on his living, so just sitting. This is an example of our fourth quarter celebrations, this one gets a page for every building almost, because everybody really went out, out for our kids. We did hybrid, but also invited those students who were back home taking home learnings, we wanted to tell everybody and have everybody participate. So everybody, at Betsy, they had a dance party, they made all the students, you know, like, a little dark items. Men doing a dance theme for them. Bart Fields had the ice cream truck, had a kid come in, again, we're trying to follow a guideline, so we took a really pre-travel back. Middle school had a pizza dude, and that's the beach for the kids on the playground. Field Stephen, Grant White, he did a photo booth, he did, doing rotation. We even had a library come out, just providing a summer resource for them, we had an ice cream truck as well. Field Stephen then had a gelato truck, they had a pizza truck, had a pizza line, we used swag bags, all the school spirit items. See the picture up at the top of the question, and everything happened to be together again. Monthly incentives were a big deal this year, like a lot of challenges at the school, again, we saw a certain technique feature, like. Being on the same group as a class, and having one raffle, it was all the students supporting, we did a raffle. We had students of the month at each building, showing our three Ds, and at home, we were expecting you to, you know, be respectful, be responsible on these days. And then attendance awards, just giving students additional attendance, showing out on time, so. A lot, every kid had a lot of opportunities to be able to earn something, just for being part of the school community. We had our virtual school stores, those are still working for everybody, they did come to see the items, a lot of schools adapted it for its fee. Like an online shopping type of events, or the physical thing, you can buy what you like, and then you can get shipped or put together and. Give it to them with school supply, which is happening every month. And then recognition, this year, instead of schools just still having application and getting gold brands or silver recognition. We had to actually look for the teach booths from PBIS, all schools had to provide upload actual evidence for each year to show how it's submitted. That we were supporting students at our tier one, tier two, tier three levels. Which I found it interesting, that it was really good to see that all schools have most of the recognition badges, what they call them now. So the goal for next year will be to continue to earn all the badges for all schools. Provide, you know, those resources and supports, and students are getting, especially transitioning back with each other, and there's going to be a lot of. SBL support needed, and to help kids, so just embedding that for our goals for next year. And that's just the gist of our, our work that we did this year. Again, I'll share the longer versions, so everybody can take a little bit more of a look for that. Any other questions for me?
You did a fantastic job.
Thank you.
This is fantastic, I mean, PBIS is, is. For anyone that's never implemented, that's been hands on to implement PBIS in a classroom setting. It's a lot, and it's a lot to bring into, it's the most wonderful, but it's a lot to bring into your day, and for you guys to do all the things. With a screen is exceptional, well done.
Thank you.
Ms. Torres, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So I know, I'm, I'm sure at other, at the other grade centers, this was also a thing, but I'll speak directly with Grant White. That there had been a group established for kids who had experienced loss.
That is separate from PBIS.
Is it, okay. I'm sorry, you're right. Do you mind if I ask about that? Do you mind if I ask about that? I'm just curious about, you know, collectively, we've all experienced so much loss. Is that something that we're, that will still be available to students, will it be incorporated more into sort of second step? Like, I'm just a little curious about that, sorry to put you on the spot.
It is the second of the program, the second step we say.
Sure.
I run it at Grant White, what I do, I send out more and send to every single student in this building.
Yeah.
And it's based on loss, like you said, whether for the name of your families, when you go past, or whether it's divorce. Or some kind of house change, and we'll have some students who they can't remember their parents or something, or grandparents, any type of loss of, 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 of. So parents want to play them up for it, that they just bought a foundation program, and there's a short amount that goes along with it.
Okay.
So personally, my intention is to run it again. Make sure that it's something committed to that.
Sure.
But I think that this year, I would be, you know, the most important to provide that support for the student. Just because, again, like, I don't know, and, and I actually, there were some parents did reach out to me. Students that have come to my place, so they reached out and said, you know, my son, uncle is in the classroom right now, and we're expecting him to come to the classroom.
Sure.
So then I did more of an individual, what I'm going to like do with them again, but that's something that I think is important to the way we should do this.
Okay, thank you, sorry to divert, but I appreciate that, thank you.
Sure, you're welcome.
Okay, any other PBIS related questions? Okay, thank you so much. Okay, so now we are doing something different than we've traditionally done, which is we are going to go into closed session. I'm saying this right, I mean, I'm going to take a vote, but, okay, we are going to go into closed session, do some business. And then we will come back out of closed session, I see you're already up there, you're already up there, which is great, okay. So I will make a motion to go into closed session for the purposes of employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of employees. Settlement of claims and discussion of closed session minutes, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Ms. Cotton, I'll give you the second, and then, all in favor, please?
Aye.
Okay, very good, so we are going to go into closed session. Okay, great, we are back in open session, thanks for staying with us, if anybody's still out there. Alright, um. Sorry, I'm slipping. Okay, so in terms of our consent agenda items, may I have a motion to approve?
I will make the motion.
Steve for the second, can we do a roll call? I think we need a roll call, Mr. Brophy, do we need a roll call to? Okay, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great, we have approved the consent agenda, sorry, everybody. Okay, welcome to our district principals, Cass and Baden. All of our other employees as well. Um, okay, number 11 items for action. Mr. Brophy, number one, consider recommendation to approve the alternate one proposal for the purchase of five. Multi-function print and copy devices from proven business systems for $36,675, an annual maintenance cost of $4,690. I'll make the motion, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Great, Steve, this is the second discussion.
So as we've been talking about, we have. Copy event in each of our buildings, and these are six years old, and they can be replaced. This type of item falls outside of school code bid requirements, we can obtain the request for a proposal for these items, which we know that did. There were two proposals that were submitted, they were due by nine AM on Friday, October fifth. And looking at the proposals and evaluating the options. The options being recommended is from proven, who is the current vendor. And based on the pricing that they have provided, as well as the service history that they have, their responses concerning all the kind of service issues, should we have any. We're recommending the proposal from proven businesses for the Toshiba devices, and also want to mention, all of the devices in the buildings are Toshiba. And so, so folks don't have to deal with a different kind of interface, we're also referring to keep that brand at least for another five years. We did look at, if some proposal, other options we asked for, the option of a Xerox device. Proven did provide prices for one, it being much higher, we're saying Toshiba, the other vendor. It will provide a pricing on a brand that's not a Xerox. And so we're recommending Toshiba's that are.
Sure. Um, please feel free to ask questions, a reminder that we did talk about this and the accompanying items about two months ago.
Yes, and a new meeting, a draft of the RFP was provided.
Got it, thank you. Okay, does anybody have questions before we do a roll call for votes? Okay, a roll call, please. Ms. Lyon.
Aye.
Ms. Sally.
Aye.
Ms. Crawford.
Aye.
Ms. Rommel.
Aye.
Ms. Patton, aye, Ms. Wood.
Aye.
Ms. Silver.
Aye.
Alright, great, so we've got copy lists. Number two, consider recommendation to approve the proposal from Two Trees Technologies LLC. For the purchase of new line two touch flat panel displays wall mounts and mobile carts for $220,946. I'll make the motion, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Great, thinking this way, discussion?
As previously discussed, all of the meeting boards throughout the district, all buildings that aged significantly. They've become too costly to repair, the bulbs that burn out, projectors become an issue, and display properly. After discussion, we're going to consider looking at some other options. Instead, in order to get these devices switched out, we want to proceed with this proposal to acquire all of the boards that we need to swap out the meeting boards with these new devices. In all the classrooms throughout the district. Just a couple of things, as noted in the support packet, there'll be about six to eight week time. The other thing we want to mention too, is that. In these devices, what's nice about that, in case anyone's concerned, we can install these devices, have them be active. And then take the mediums out of the classroom, it's not like one has to come out for the other to go in. So that helps us in terms of the labor involved with de-instructing and disassembling the meeting boards, that most of which are mounted to walls and classrooms.
You wouldn't have questions?
One other comment actually.
Of course.
So we did obtain two proposals, we see one from Two Trees Technologies was substantially lower. And initially, we thought the cost was going to be over $250,000, so we're very pleased that it's less than that.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
When would they be coming, like? Before school, would we start using Permian boards and they'd be switched out?
Correct, correct, yes, we'll have to use the Permian boards until these physically arrive. And then we'll have a plan for the labor involved with assembling them and putting them to the classrooms.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are they all arriving at once, or are you tearing them off into some links or assembly purposes?
In terms of the new devices?
Yeah, so are you putting out in a sense a blanket order for all units, but you're having certain ones shipped as. You're able to assemble and put in the school, or are you having all arrive at the same time?
We're going to have them all shipped to their respective schools, and that's, they grow it out by school. So when we, upon approval, we will say, proceed with our order, we can ship them to their schools. And between now and then, we'll have a plan for when they arrive, their assembly and installation of the classrooms.
And you have space to store them for all that time.
We do.
Okay.
Thank you for asking. And if they all be in one location, we would not have the space, that's why we have to ship them to schools.
Great, um, okay. Uh, do they have a roll call, please? Ms. Lyon.
Aye.
Ms. Sally.
Aye.
Ms. Crawford.
Aye.
Ms. Rommel.
Aye.
Ms. Patton, aye, Ms. Wood.
Aye.
Hi. I thought you said something else for a minute. Yeah, you said it wrong, it's fine. Okay, great, I'm really thrilled, I think this is a terrific, like, welcome back to school kind of gift for everybody.
Very much so, and on behalf of Zach and the office, Jason Soss, thank you.
Yes, of course, the big event, but we're excited about it. Okay, number three, consider recommendation to approve National Equity Project Professional Services contract for FY 2022. For $35,000, and FY 2023 for $35,000, I will make the motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Great, thanks, Steve. Discussion?
So this is the proposal for continuation of our professional learning with National Equity Project. Just a couple of details I want to point out, so the National Equity Project is a partner with the Bell Network. The Bell Network is a consortium of agencies dedicated to building equitable learning environments, classrooms, and other entities throughout the United States and globally. So what, what the National Equity Project has done is they were operating two district networks prior to this year. One was the Midwest District Network, of which we were a founding member with about six other school districts. There was another network that was also coexisting, and what they've done is they can solidify the both networks into what they're referred to as the. National Equity Project Bell District Network. So yeah, yesterday, Wednesday, this week, we did participate, members of our team participated in the. National Equity Project Bell District Network, pre-launch for this upcoming school year, to set the table for professional learning that's going to occur. A couple of other items to note, that per Dr. Alvarez, we are expanding our circle ensemble for the equity work of the district. Whereas in four, it was a group of about five people, now it's going to be substantially better represented throughout the district. We also have, there are three convenings that the National Equity Project provides. They have a fall, a winter, a spring, so our circle ensemble will be participating with those. And in between those convenings, they do what they call affinity groups based on role in the district. So there's a teacher affinity group, there's a principal affinity group, there's a central office affinity group, and there's superintendent system. And those occur each month in between the convenings, and I would share with you, those are very powerful. I participated myself, and I participated in those last year all throughout the year. And to be with colleagues who have similar roles, talk about how you're supporting equity in the district. There's a lot of different perspectives I can share, and good resources for us. So we're asking the board to approve the continuation of this professional learning, does align with our equity parent statement. It is valuable, we'll share as well, the, the insights that are provided among the member districts are very helpful to us as well.
Can you be bringing some of these, the learning back and either according to the superintendent or the district or the board, we can hear what you guys are getting at?
Very much so, in fact, as, as you're going to discover when we get to October, the work that we're going to do with Bell, and later on, the work that we're. In a couple of items, or the next item, with No My Power, that's all going to be represented in our teacher improvement plan and the overall strategic plan. So we're going to be providing information on that, not only throughout here, but for the next, so, so, thank you, very well.
I would also like to put out there that I think the board could use a refresh, most people were not here. When we began our time with the National Equity Project, and I would love for everyone to have an opportunity to do that.
Very much so, so if we can take that stuff further, I may, there is a, the person that is working with the National Equity Project as an consultant.
Okay.
Who's a former board member at River Forest District 90.
Okay.
And she is working with board members in regard to understanding equity.
That's cool.
And supporting equity in the school districts, and so what I'd like to do with Dr. Alvarez, is okay with this, is to connect that person with Dr. Alvarez. And then for, and I wasn't even at the conversation with that person.
Sure.
And determine some possible next steps.
Okay.
Depending on which learn from that interaction.
Yeah, I, I'd love to put that as a priority, and it sounds great. Alright, I think we're, does anybody? Okay, let's do a roll call. Ms. Lyon.
Aye.
Ms. Sally.
Aye.
Ms. Crawford.
Aye.
Ms. Rommel.
Aye.
Ms. Patton, aye. Pardon, I, Ms. Wood.
Hi.
I, all right, any piece been approved for the next two years? Um, okay, number four, consider recommendation to approve Illinois and Power amended agreement between West 40 Intermediate Service Center Number Two and the Board of Education of Forest Park School District 91, using Illinois and Power funds from the Title I 1003A School Improvement Grant, not to exceed $35,000. I will make the motion, may I have a second?
I'll second, thanks Catherine.
Okay, discussion?
Yes, please, so if you recall, back in June, we asked you to approve the proposal from Illinois and Power, West 40 Intermediate Service Center. Wouldn't you know, that on June 23rd, literally as Dr. Albert is wrapping up our administrative ensemble retreat, the Illinois State Board of Education sends an email stating that all FY 2021 dollars for the Title I 1003A School Improvement Grant can be rolled over into the next fiscal year 100% of the funds.
That's pretty good.
Now, if we would have known that before June, our June working, we would not have asked you to approve the proposal that, of course, it came about two weeks later. So what we're asking is, now that there's more time to use the resources, and if you notice, the revised amended proposal, based on the adjustments that we're making now, the actual anticipated cost is low because of the work that we're planning for the coming months. So what we're asking is to, to approve this amended agreement through June 30 of 2022 to allow us the entire year for services that they're providing. Because one other thing that I need to mention was in the agreement document, that's what I want to point out, the reset for dollars, right? We get new dollars come September 1 of this year, 2021, for FY 2022. So this, these dollars are, this agreement is for dollars last year. The FY 2022 dollars, we're going to discuss with West 40, a new agreement specific to those dollars. So you'll see at least one more proposal from us in regard to Illinois and Power West 40 this year. And just wanted to give you a heads up on that.
Thanks. Okay, let's have a roll call please. Mr. Lyons.
Hi.
Ms. Salo.
Hi.
Ms. Croft.
Hi.
Mr. Rommel.
Hi.
Pardon, I, Ms. Wood.
Hi.
Hi. All right, um, number five, consider adoption of the resolution authorizing disposal of personal property of Forest Park School District 91 as listed in attached Exhibit A. I will make the motion, a second please.
I'll second.
Thank you, discussion?
So in this request, and if you recall, we did one last month. What we're asking to offer as a proposal of, since we now can proceed with getting a new flat panel displays, we want your authorization to start the meeting board devices. And so in this request, we're asking your permission to do that. Now, this is going to be, you know, probably a six month process. As we get the new panels in, take the meeting boards out, Mr. Frank Albert will work with a recycler to, to have those meeting boards taken off our hands. But obviously it's going to take a bit of time. Now, we also have some old devices here that we are asking for either for sale as well as some devices specific for some combination to the power hall community center. So I just want to point out, uh, there are some of the Chrome devices, unapproved seating, these devices are supposed to be provenation to the power hall community center. Mr. Frank Albert and Sacks will get those devices to the community center. And then those devices that they evaluate are good for sale. We will offer first sale to families and the devices that are not sold will offer to staff. Just going to share as well, sale price for either family or staff is $25 for a month.
Oh, wow, good deal, okay. We have questions?
Yeah.
Would any of us be available for the back to school event? As information to hand out to parents?
Yes, absolutely, we can put that together. Yes, thank you for asking, sir, we'll put that together right away, thank you.
Or knowing that they're going to be coming available for sale.
I like that.
Right, and we want to offer parents first, so we want to make sure they're aware, so thank you.
Any disposition of these is going to, they're going to be ways to all.
Yes, yes.
Like you said before, there'll, there'll be some kind of a certification for that.
Yes, I've learned that the term is deprovision. So yes, so they will be deprovision, which means they will not have access to our network, they will not have access to any of our applications.
Great. The very fancy word. Okay, a roll call please. Mr. Lyons.
Hi.
Ms. Salo.
Hi.
Ms. Croft.
Hi.
Mr. Rommel.
Hi.
Pardon, I, Ms. Wood.
Hi.
Hi. All right, great. Thanks, Mr. Brophy.
Thank you, once again, so I have Jason.
I did about all that stuff. Okay, Dr. Albert, um, one, consider board of education policy revisions, additions, amendments for second reading and adoption. I'll make the motion, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks Catherine. Okay, discussion please? Are there any questions? I know, policy committee is on it. Appreciate all the pre-work that I've.
I will be setting a meeting because we have some new information.
Yep.
Then I'll be setting a meeting soon.
Okay.
I'll set it out to you.
That's great, thank you. All right, if there's no questions or comments, we'll go forward with the roll call please. Ms. Croft.
Hi.
Mr. Rommel.
Hi.
Mr. Lyons.
Hi.
Ms. Salo.
Hi.
Pardon, I, Ms. Wood.
Hi.
Ms. Pyler.
Hi.
Thank you. Okay, number two, consider recommendation to terminate the employment of the school secretary at Betsy Ross Elementary School. May I have a motion please?
No move.
I'll second.
Thank you, discussion?
Um, I discussed in closed session.
All right. Thank you. Number three, consider recommendation to approve Shield Illinois COVID-19. We didn't, sorry, I forgot, we need a roll call. I apologize, thank you for that. Um, Mr. Rommel.
Hi.
Ms. Croft. Ms. Salo.
Hi.
Mr. Lyons. Pardon, I, Ms. Wood.
Hi.
Ms. Syler.
Hi.
Thank you. Okay, number three, consider recommendation to approve Shield Illinois COVID-19 testing support intergovernmental agreement between the trustees of the University of Illinois and the Board of Education of Forest Park School District 91. I will make the motion, a second please.
Second.
Thank you, Steve, discussion?
Uh, Shield Illinois is going to be screening testing here. We want to provide to our students, it's going to take at least 30 hours, vaccinated staff. This is free, it takes our children probably, I would say a minute, maybe less, because there'll be saliva tests. So they will not be pulled out of class too long, to burn to death. And it'll be weekly, not daily. We also want to be good, because we want to make sure that we are having our after-school academics, so that our children feel safe as well. So there's a lot of positive regards we can share with our patients that we want to use as we go and we all get to school. And I'm going to prefer having to, is there anything else I'm missing?
Nothing else beyond that, back up as we, I look forward to getting this program running. We will share robust communication to our families, so don't know what to expect. But one point that I do want to mention is, so we had, we had a couple of calls with Shield Illinois, we had one last Friday. We had another one this morning with the Cleveland Shandys, and something that was in our boardback document that we want to clarify. We are going to provide an opt-out form that for any family that wants to opt out of having their child tested, they need to complete the opt-out form. If they do not complete the opt-out form, then it's, the district is proceeding with testing for their child. So I just want to be clear, I'm just going to say again, that parents who do not want their child tested must complete the opt-out form. And at this time, I believe we intend to make that available in the parent portal of our new student information system.
When we make that available to parents, are we going to ensure, I assume we're going to ensure that we're going to tell them what the physical differences are, hey, this takes spit and toothpaste, you'll be very slavvy, we'll tell you. So just a bit, a parent might have problems with testing because I don't want you to stick to it.
And they talk about saliva, do they not?
Yeah, no, it's just, that's, so, yes.
In fact, we're, we're going to provide a video link that shows an actual example of a child who did their saliva test at a nearby school district, just for those to be able to see this, kind of what it looks like. I am going to share this with those people who watch the video. You're going to see that the student took a bit of a path to get to a testing place with gymnasium. Please know that for our students, it's going to be nothing. The video intends to point out that it takes less than five minutes. And as Dr. Albert has pointed out, for our kids, it'll take less than a minute, because we're not going to have to walk all of the roads to go get tested. Just thought that's important context for y'all.
So the opt-outs for their unvaccinated, or those who are not vaccinated.
Correct, if any parent who does not want their child tested, they must complete the opt-out. If they do not complete it, then we are proceeding, we have to upload a data file to the platform that University of Illinois, Shield Illinois uses. And so we have to know their students to include and which ones not to include. Also need to mention, we are going to require that any adults who are not vaccinated will also have to test weekly as well.
Okay, and then, so, given, and faculty that are vaccinated, they can opt.
They may be not.
Could they if they wanted to?
We certainly would not oppose that if they still want to contest.
Okay.
Um, if Shield Illinois may not allow them, we'll verify that as they help us with our operating.
Okay.
If for any reason that's against me and us, we'll be sure to report on it.
When are we hoping to have this up and running?
Tuesday, September 14th.
Oh, okay.
And that assumes that we have all of our consents, if you will, for parents that we have, you know, the opt-outs. That's all based on timing, seeing that information. We will keep you in the loop with Dr. Albert's newsletter, if that day is adjusted and then.
Great, okay.
So that can be what's fully guessing, so it's had both shots, not just one, right?
Oh.
I'm sorry.
So when it's vaccinated, you're only telling them vaccinated, they had both.
Okay, or J and J. Okay. Great, okay.
And then does that, giving those, the opt-out, will be the 14th, when it's, right?
Well, probably we'll have to find out more, if that's, but thank you for asking.
And I'm assuming that as kids either age up to 12, asking for a friend, or become vaccinated, e- even if they're 14, that they can opt out? Like, once their vaccination status changes, that if they wanted to opt out, they could then?
They could opt out. They could opt out. We are still going to ask parents who are not required, we'll still ask parents, those students become vaccination eligible for their age.
Yes.
If there's, is vaccinated, parents don't have to, so we're still going to ask them, we will monitor that as well.
Okay, I mean, that answers my question. Um, I will say that I, correct me if I'm wrong, this is the system that is being used at all three University of Illinois campuses, right? So Chicago, then the, I don't want to say the flagship, or Champaign-Urania and Springfield. And they're requiring vaccination. So I say this because for people who may be worried about the efficacy of this, um, I think the standard is pretty high considering that they are requiring vaccination of their students, so, okay.
Alana, get it done.
Alana, I got it done. Okay, any other questions? I'm really excited about this. It's a great thing. Okay, um, a roll call please. Ms. Salo.
Hi.
Mr. Lyons.
Hi.
Mr. Rommel. Pardon, I, Ms. Wood.
Hi.
Ms. Pyler.
Hi.
All right, terrific, thank you. Um, 12 additional matters, let me fix, oh gosh, I don't think I have the clicker. You can do it, yeah, no, no, you don't, okay. Thank you. One more, thank you. Um, additional matters for consideration from the board, does anyone have anything they'd like to say?
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, just with talking about masking and vaccination, um, someone in my family was exposed to someone who was vaccinated and tested positive. So, um, I think it is very important, very important to stay masked, especially when you're around other people outside of your household. So, um, we were all negative thankfully, but it was just a, a realization that it can still happen.
Everybody's fine? Anybody else?
Okay, I, of course, did you, you look like you were going to say something. I am so happy school is starting back. I may be ecstatic, there's lots of words I want to use, I am so glad it's going to be all day. I'm just all over the field, all day. And I'm glad the kids are going to be back in the building, especially.
So you're saying you're, you're excited?
Just, just a little.
Others? Okay, what I would like to say is what I've been saying for the last 18 months, which is that, um, please continue to mask, please continue to socially distance, please continue to vaccinate. We have a way out of this and a way to keep our community safe, and that is by vaccinating both adults and anybody over the age of 12. I cannot stress that enough. Um, I was really dismayed over the last couple of weeks to see a lot of school boards under attack. Yes. Essentially, it's very scary to me, um, it's really disappointing. And I want to say to our community, thank you for trusting us to be able to make good decisions that are guided, A, by our mask mandate. We feel really strongly about that, um, for kids in schools, staff in schools, but also for us to continue to do what we believe is right to help our community get back to school safely. I cannot stress enough how like, Monique, excited I am, my kid is delighted to be able to start middle school in person. Um, we now see that as the gift that it is, because it is not something that you can not take for granted. So I would say for anybody who is vaccine hesitant, um, my polite way of saying this is, please, there are lots of resources out there that don't involve YouTube videos and stuff like that, but go to your medical professional if you have questions. There's lots of ways to get really good information, there's lots of people walking around fully vaccinated that are still fine. And so, you know, I think particularly to protect our people who are young and at the mercy of everybody else making good decisions, they have been through enough. And I really want, um, our community to continue to be vaccinated. This is not over, so, that's what I will say.
One thing to add to that, those who may be vaccine hesitant, Cook County has a ton of really good information that can address literally every single thing I've ever heard anyone say about vaccines, you know, a veteran force. It's real clear, it's easy to understand, um, you can find it, if you, if you ping me or anything, we're happy to help you find it. So there's good information out there and you can get it.
I'm not happy to help you find it because it's that Cook County Department of House.
Yep.
So just go there, it's all right there.
They post it all over social media.
Yeah. So there's lots of good information out there, I'm really hopeful that we're going to have a really high vaccination rate in our district when we get back into session. So, um, with that, unless anybody else has something to add, um, this is a really nice experiment, it's late, but we all made it. Thanks for sticking with us. Number 13, adjourn, I will make the motion, may I have one second? Will you second? Okay, um, Monique has seconded, all in favor?
Hi.
Very good, thank you, next meeting, September 9th. Thanks for joining us.